The Lemmonster City Council meeting is funded in part by De Careless Insurance Agency at www.decarelessinsuranceagency.com and by Avidia Bank at www.avidiabank.com.
Okay, we are going to begin in just a moment. Michelle, if you want to come in and take a seat at the table, the Chairwoman of Ways and Means will conduct your interview in just a moment. It is now 6:45. Madam Chairwoman of Ways and Means, I believe the Mayor was coming as well. I spoke to him earlier, so he should be here in a moment. You can begin. Yeah, it's fine.
Good evening. My name is Pauline Cormier. I am the Chair of the Ways and Means Committee. The other two members of the committee are the councilor seated to my left, Frank Arndinger, and the councilor seated directly across from me, Todd Deacon. This is a request for the confirmation of the appointment of Michelle Powell to the position of Health Director for the City of Lemmonster for a term of three years, effective November 14, 2022, term to expire April 15, 2025. Ms. Powell, welcome.
Thank you.
I think most of us know you here, but for those of the, those at home or those that don't know you as well, if you want to take a few minutes and give us a little information about you, your background, your experience.
Sure. Most of you know me, but some of you don't. I grew up in Connecticut and in 1998 I graduated from Southern Connecticut State University. I have a bachelor's degree in environmental public health. Shortly after I graduated, I moved to Lemmonster, actually Wister and then Lemmonster, and I got this job working in the Health Department in August of 98, and I have been in there ever since for over 24 years, working as a code enforcement inspector. And I love my job. That's how I'm here.
Michelle, what are you going to bring to the, what skills, what particular skills are you going to bring with you to the office?
So, over the years, I've gone to lots of seminars, conferences, and received lots of certifications. I have my registered sanitarian license. I have my soil evaluator's license, my system inspector's license for Title V. I have, I'm scheduled, my CPO license for certified pool operators license expired this past year, but I am scheduled to retake that this coming up March. I have my housing certification, SurfSafe certification. Pretty much all of the certifications that fall under the Health Department I have achieved over the course of the years.
And during the position that you currently hold, what is your, what's your communications like with the public and those that you serve?
Every day. Every day. As a code enforcement inspector, dealing with landlords and tenants on a regular basis every day.
Okay.
Various situations.
And what about management skills? Do you, do you have any particular experience in management?
This is the only job I've had professionally after graduating college. I was the appointing acting director while my previous directors were out on leave. Chris Knut was out on a couple of medical leaves when he had his hips replaced. Last summer, we were down a director. I was the acting director. This past summer, once Jeff got sick, I was the acting director. So, I've been chosen to represent the Health Department in need of some leadership there.
And you're comfortable in that position?
I am.
Okay. I'm going to open this up first to other members of my committee if they have any questions. Counselor Arndinger?
Thank you very much, Michelle. I don't know if you recall or not, but during my brief stint on the Health Department Board, we met with your, as you were the, what are the, I'm drawing a blank now, alcohol or tobacco control officer. You spoke to us a couple of different times?
I think that was Joan Hamlet that you're thinking.
Was that Joan Hamlet? Okay.
That's the Director of Tobacco.
Okay. All right. Sorry. But I was still glad that may have been you, so.
Yeah, no, I do, well, since I've taken this job, I've kind of stepped back from working from her because it's a lot going on together. But I was doing inspections for her, enforcing flavor bans, and taking youth out and actually doing youth inspections.
Oh, okay.
My daughter's a youth inspector, so we would take them out to see if they would sell to minors.
Okay.
Yep.
Sorry about the confusion.
That's all right. No, I got it.
It's been a while, yeah.
Don't, I gotta.
But I have to tell you, you know, this past Johnny Appleseed Festival, I don't think I've seen a health inspector or code enforcement officer out to the Johnny Appleseed Festival at all in the number of years that I've worked there. Maybe they slipped in when I was working, but you stopped by our booth twice, I believe, to make sure that we were doing okay with the.
That was actually our food inspector Rita, and she's new. She's been here for about a year.
Again confusing because I'm old.
We all have brown hair, I think. So, that was her. But usually, we do have somebody come and take a walk through the JA Festival every year. I've done it before. Sometimes we rotate, but yeah, there's usually someone.
I was going to compliment you on that, but.
Thank you. I will pass the message along to Rita.
Yeah. It was interesting to see that because, like I said, usually I'm busy, so I don't notice who's there, but I.
She's very thorough.
Just noticed it the very first time, yeah. So, it's very good. I don't, you know, looking at your resume and your background, you've been in the city since 98.
I have.
I think you've done every job probably that could be done, right?
I've done lots of stuff in that office, yes. Yep.
I don't think there's anything I can say beyond what your resume says.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Arndinger, you'll sit.
Thank you. That's right.
Counselor Deacon?
Thank you for coming down, Michelle. We did get an email, an opinion from KP Law, and it is the Mayor's appointment, from my understanding.
Okay.
And I trust his judgment. I know you have a lot of experience. Been here for quite a long time, and I think you'll be an asset. Unfortunate circumstances to get the position, but I welcome your board.
Thank you very much.
That's all I have.
Thank you. I'm going to go around the table here with Counselor Angelini.
Well, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, Michelle.
Hi, good evening.
I just think I'd like to begin by just saying that how proud I was of the Health Department, how you folks handled the COVID situation, and the entire city government and Health Department under Mr. Knut's leadership. But I know you were actively involved as well. And Health Departments were tested, and you guys passed the test.
Thank you.
With flying colors, in my opinion. So, I want to commend you for that. And as my colleague, Counselor Deacon stated, you know, you found yourself in this acting position as a result of a tragedy, obviously.
Yes.
But from what I can tell, you've done an exemplary job in that capacity as well. I haven't heard any complaints, so that's a darn good sign. And so, I'd like to just thank you for coming down this evening. Please keep up the good work.
Thank you. I will. I promise.
Counselor Bedanza?
Good evening, Michelle. I have worked with you for a long time, long before I was a city councilor, so have some familiarity with your work and your work ethic, and glad to have you aboard. I have something I just want to put out there because it's a, frankly, it's a pet peeve of mine. I walk a lot, and I have a chance to observe what people put in their recycling bins. It drives me nuts.
Me too.
Just last week, someone put a four-foot by three-foot framed print, glass and all, in a recycling bin, sticking out of the, crooked, sticking out of the bin. And I sent a picture to the Mayor, and I said, like, when does this end? So, I'm just wondering, could we potentially develop some PSAs or some educational programs for the public? Because I think it's, frankly, I think it's out of control. I see people put weeds in there.
Yeah.
I've seen styrofoam currently, plastic bags.
Pizza boxes, yeah.
It just, it drives me nuts.
Yeah, years ago, we did a commercial with Chris Knut and I. We actually filmed it at my house with my children, showing what was acceptable, what was not. And it aired on LA TV for a while. It was actually a pretty good commercial. I think we're definitely due for something like that.
Yeah, time for refresh.
Yeah. The contract ends in June, so we're going to be starting to get together and coming up with some ideas on how to get the education out to these people and teach them. And even if it's by the inspectors, going neighborhood to neighborhood, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
But yeah, it is important because they're putting everything that they're not supposed to be putting in there.
Yeah, I'm a rabid recycler. I mean, I just love to recycle, but I just, like I said, it's a pet peeve. But anything you can do along those lines.
Absolutely.
I'm sure it's going to benefit the city in the long run.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Counselor Cormier?
Thank you very much. It's good to see you here, Michelle.
Thank you.
One of the questions I have, and obviously with 24 years of experience in the office, you know, is there any, is there anything that you think is going to be challenging in terms of you taking on this new role? What are some of the challenges that you might worry about, if any?
I'm going to say reviewing septic plans is challenging for me, just because I'm not 100% familiar with them all the time, and they're different based on lots and stuff. I do have my certifications and licenses for them. I just don't do them frequently enough to know them the best. But I do have a coworker, Rita, my food inspector, she used to do septic systems in Westminster, and she's very knowledgeable about them. So, I've heard help me, and I have a lot of other networking inspectors in the surrounding towns that know how to do them really well. And I can always reach out to them. And John Rosenberry down at the DPW, he's come to help me before too. And so, I feel like I have plenty of help to get it done.
Good. Perfect. Good. You know, obviously, you come here a little different than some of the other people that we interview because some people come here, they never worked for the city. So, all we have is, you know, just their resume to read. But I get the, I have the distinct pleasure of seeing you in action. I know we've dealt with chickens.
Yes.
Roosters together recently. And I see you every, every May, you know, working very hard at the recycling, the collection.
Yeah, the recycling event, yep.
Day that goes on up at the DPW barn. And so, I certainly have a lot of confidence in you, and I think you'll do very well.
Thank you.
And I, you know, I look forward to your confirmation. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Any other councilors? Counselor Shalafu Zephyr?
Thank you. Yep. Hi, Michelle.
Hi.
The animal control officer falls under your purview, is that right?
Correct.
In the Health Department. I've had complaints from people that have been chased by dogs, bitten by dogs, and it's really upsetting. I mean, you know. So, what, what's the process for a constituent or person, you know, who has been either harassed by a dog, bitten by a dog? How is that managed by the animal control officer?
So, they're all supposed to be reported to him, and he's supposed to go to the residence, write up a report. And I believe he turns it into our office and tries to resolve it on his end with his assistant.
And resolve on his end with, does that mean going to the dog owner and, I'm just, I'm not sure. I had a couple of complaints.
Yeah, I'm not exactly sure what his protocol is as to when he has to quarantine the dogs. But I do know he has, he does have to go there. He does have to write, follow up with a report. And he does have to drop the report off in our office. I do know that.
Okay. All right. I'll follow up with you offline.
Okay. All right.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
We'll sit. Counselor Frida?
Maybe this is a question for you, Madam Chair. The three years that Michelle is going to be appointed for, and I know the Mayor's here as well, was Jeff Stevens a five-year term? Or is this finishing out his term, or is this starting a new term?
I am, I'm not sure.
Mayor, do you?
It would be to fill the unexpired term.
Okay.
What was that? I'm sorry, Mayor.
To fill the unexpired term. So, whenever somebody's appointed and they leave for whatever reason and not with us anymore, then the next person that comes in pretty much finishes out that term. Honestly, it doesn't matter because it's, it matters most on like boards and commissions because otherwise you have everybody staggered rather than everybody getting reappointed, you know, every other year. So, she's not going to have a problem, whether it's unexpired term or long. She's done the job. She's done it many times over and over. We know where we work with her. She's very fair. She can be firm when she has to be firm, but she's very fair. So, whether it's three-year appointment or filling the unexpired term really isn't going to matter, honestly.
I guess that's why I was a little confused as to, you know, with Jeff and Chris Knut and Bob Carlson, everybody's been a hire, and she's been here for, what did you say, 24 years?
Well, she was an employee before.
I'm sorry?
She was an employee before.
Right. Right.
Now, she'll be in the department now.
But Jeff didn't have a three-year appointment, I don't think, did he?
I think there was some confusion about the whole process because like at the library, it's the, it's the Library Commission in the, in the planning board. The planning board hires the planning director. So, I think after all these years, it was just automatically assumed. And then we stopped and read through it and kept reading through it, trying to find a place that talks about the appointment. So, Copeland Page determined that in the absence of any, anything written, it would just revert to a regular appointment. So, we were under the impression too, that for all these years, Bob Carlson was here forever. So, we just figured, you know, nobody, nobody ever looked. We just assumed it was like the planning board or like the Library Commission, and, and, and some are, and some aren't. So, some departments, the Rec Department doesn't hire the Rec Director. The Mayor does. So, some are hired by the Board and others are hired by, you know, the Mayor. So, this.
I get that. But, you know, I'm just thinking, it's a good job that she's done for as long as I've known her, and I think you just said that as well.
Right.
And to have three years, I mean.
Well, it would be three years. I mean, that's, that's pretty much the statute is three years. That's the, that's the most that we could do. The others are specific. Planning Board is specific. Other, other places are specific. Licensed, you know, everyone's different. Every single one of these ordinances or the law is different. And just, you know, so in the absence of all that, it's a three-year appointment.
I, I think we're very lucky because if that were me and I spent 24 years, and now in that part of my career, I got to look at what's going to happen at the end of three years, I'd stop being a little nervous about it.
Well, she's made a lot of changes in her life. She's engaged over the weekend.
All right.
Listen, she's, she's not going anywhere. She's been here, and you know what? She could have applied.
I'm not talking about her. I'm talking about all of us.
She, she could have applied for the job before, and she chose, it was only her personal decision. She has young children or whatever. It was only her decision. Otherwise, that outcome might have been different. Now, I've been as supportive as anything. She's could easily do the job. She's done the job on three different, okay. And not some of the job, all of the job. And the reason that, she doesn't have a whole lot of experience at septic systems, and she doesn't have a job off to the side like a lot of other people do doing these jobs, and we don't have very many septic systems in the city. We just don't. So, there isn't a whole lot of experience. But other than that, she's worked every single, you know, position there is in the, in the Board of Health, and she works extremely well. Any department will tell you, any department head and any employee will tell you, they work well. We work closely with the Building Department, Fire and Police and.
Yeah, I don't think that's.
They would tell, yeah. I mean, she's, she's, she's ready. She's been ready. It's just now, you know, we finally convinced her she's ready. So, she's ready.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Dean.
Okay. Madam Chairwoman, if I may, we're already running a minute late. I just want to open up the meeting, then we'll come back and wrap this up. So, at this point, I'd like to call the meeting for the Lemmonster City Council for November 14, 2022 to order. Will you all please stand and join me for a salute to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, going to take a roll call of the honorable members of the Lemmonster City Council, beginning with Counselor Bedanza.
Present.
Counselor Cormier.
Present.
Counselor Arndinger.
Present.
Counselor Angelini.
Present.
Counselor Shalafu Zephyr.
Present.
Counselor Deacon.
Present.
Counselor Frida.
Present.
And I am present. There are eight members present this evening. Madam Vice President, do you have any records to approve this evening?
I do, Mr. President. I have the minutes of October 24, 2022. I have reviewed them. I find them to be in good order, and I'd ask that they be placed on file.
Okay. If there are no objections, we will place the minutes for October 24, 2022 on file. And at this moment, I would ask for a motion to go into recess. Counselor Shalafu Zephyr, seconded by Counselor Bedanza. All those in favor of recess signify in the usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of eight to zero, the City Council now stands in recess. Madam Chairwoman of Ways and Means, you may proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. Michelle, we'll just wrap up here quickly. Thank you very much for coming down. We appreciate your honesty. You have the stellar recommendations from everyone in City Hall, including the Mayor's office. On a personal note, I just want to say that Jeff always afforded himself the ability to run over to my desk and grab Smarties or whatever. He was there, and I would afford you that same privilege of, welcome to the Smarties at any time.
Thank you.
So, that concludes the interview. We're going to bring this up for vote in just a little bit here. So, you're welcome to stay if you'd like, or we can always, not just stay.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. While we are still in recess, we are now going to hold a public forum. The public forum is an opportunity for any member of the audience to speak on any matter listed specifically on the City Council agenda. Speakers will be asked to come to the microphone and state their formal name and address, along with identifying the specific item or items they wish to address. Each speaker is respectfully asked to keep their comments within a two-minute timeframe. The council will not be responding or answering any questions. However, at the discretion of the council president, clarification may be given. No one has signed up this evening, but I will ask, would anybody like to speak at the public forum? If so, please go to the microphone and state your name and address for the record. Once again, would anybody like to speak at the public forum? Reverend Susan, please identify yourself, although I think we all know who you are.
Hi, everybody. I'm Reverend Susan Sahuske Brown, retired from First Church Lemmonster and now living in Winchigan, Massachusetts, at a home that I had bought back in 1966. And I'm here this evening because I, I don't know the details, but I'm curious about what's happening on, that I heard something happening with the common. And I just wanted to have just to say a couple of comments. Historically, as the minister from First Church for over 24 years, I was able to do some history. Mark and I have worked a little bit on some of the history in Lemmonster. And the one thing that I do know is that I've been able to kind of go back in and find out that in 1841, the common, I thought it was later, but 1841, the common was sold to the town for $600 with provisions on that deed. And those provisions are that nothing permanent be, shall never be used for any other purpose other than a common. And I think that begs some conversation about what is a common. Never have permanent buildings be on it, and never be enclosed by a slight fence. And in precedent is in 1982, and then again in 2000, and I want to say probably about 2013 or '14, when Jimmy Lanciani was a councilperson, there was a precedent established, reestablished that the church always have a say on what happens on the common. And though I'm no longer living in town, my heart is really here in Lemmonster. This is where I cut my teeth and had my whole career. So, I just wanted to ask anything that you think about, that you make sure that the, that the deed is clear, that you have a copy of that deed, and that you have conversation about what is a common, and follow those provisions that had been established with that deed, and that, and that's it. Okay? So, thank you.
Thank you very much, Reverend Susan. If you stick around for just a few minutes, I believe the Mayor and Wendy are going to come in and explain what they intend to do.
Okay, great. Mark, do you want to speak?
Yeah. Would anybody else like to speak to the public forum? Please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. My name is Mark Moran. I live at 36 Maple Ave here in town. I am chairperson of the Parish Committee of First Church. Therefore, according to our bylaws, I am president of the congregation. I'm an officer of the church. So, if any consideration needs to be given by First Church to what's going on at the common, I would be the person who would galvanize, direct, and report on that effort. I'm mostly here to listen this evening and find out what's going on. So, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much. Would anybody else like to speak to the public forum? Once again, would anybody else like to speak to the public forum? And for one final time, would anybody else like to speak to the public forum? Seeing none, I declare the public forum closed. I did speak to the Mayor earlier, and unless there's any objection, since we're already in recess, him and Wendy would like to come in and speak to us about C-23. So, if there's no objection, we could take care of that now, and then we will go into our meeting after they're finished and just go right through all of the items without any interruptions. And I don't see any objections, Mayor, so welcome. And we look forward to your presentation, yourself and Wendy. Thank you.
I guess it was already on. All right. We condensed it to a quick presentation. So, just to get started, in my 29.5 years here, I've heard all kinds of variations of the story behind the common. And so, we took the time to read through and get all the documentation because it was always different things. I mean, over the years, right, since 1800s, right, the story changes, right, is what people's understandings are. So, we took the time to go through all of this. And what we applied for is what's called a PAC grant for the downtown common, for a number of reasons. First of which are safety concerns. Over the years, we've run wires for lighting, and everything is sort of temporary, nothing permanent. We've added, I mean, all you have to do is walk down there and see the junction boxes and wires and everything else. Those need to be eliminated, and we need to get regular, you know, service in there and get electricity where we need to, and it needs to be buried in the ground. You can go ahead. Show some of the pictures, if you can, of existing conditions. So, we've gotten other grants there in the past. We have sidewalks that need to be replaced in that area, inside the park and the perimeter of the park. See that curbing there? One of the things I've seen over and over and over again, and a good example is the Johnny Appleseed Festival, is people will be having a conversation either on the concrete or on the, on the grass. And when the conversation's done, they'll either walk forward or back, and we have trip and fall situations there all the time. Even this past weekend with Veterans Day, there's, it's not to say everybody falls, but you can see people losing their. but you can see people losing their balance. That will be eliminated. The grass will be on the same elevation as the walkways. And there'll be more than likely brick pavers, just some more of the defects in the area. Those all be corrected. Those are some of the underground you can see on the right. You know, Joe's done a good job, but it's always, you know, everything is temporary and nothing really done permanently, because it requires, you know, major work. It's not inexpensive. But it's got to be done, whether we pay for it with a grant or we pay for it with city funds. Same thing, you can see here, more electrical work that needs to get done, wires all over the place. All right. And then you can kind of back up if you want. So the PAC grant is exactly for this, and I'm not sure you can read all of this, but this is the grant schedule. We did public notice, and a survey went out July 2nd, and we got 35 responses. And the most frequent response is was to add a water fountain, because originally, if you see the pictures of the downtown, there was a water fountain in the downtown. Councilors received notice of the public hearing and sample designs by email on July 2nd. Again, public meeting took place on July 7th at City Hall. The grant was submitted July 14th, and the grant, in the amount of $400,000, was awarded on September 21st. There was newspaper articles, editorial on October 1st and the 8th talking about the grant. And then there's a local match, which you know, tonight's over $188,000. This is the grant we need to appropriate the entire amount. And then we get reimbursed, we get reimbursed later. It's less the match, I'm sorry. And then the reminder, the grant for the design and construction design will be completed over the winter, bid documents completed in the spring. So one of the processes that, what we use is, we don't have an exact plan, because the whole point of these PAC grants is to get input, is to say to the community, everyone in the community, "So what do you think? We have this beautiful park. We use it now more than we've ever used it. It's a gathering spot." One of the things that it says in the deed is, you know, this is a spot, and it actually speaks to the fact that this was a spot where local farmers would bring their cattle. And so that was made mention of. But it is very, it's used, and we want people to use it more often. So not every event is like the Johnny Appleseed Festival or the stroll. Sometimes you have a smaller event. We had a Haitian fest there with a couple hundred people. It went well. We opened up, we had a porta potty, but we also had restrooms here at City Hall open. It's going to make it much better for anybody that's handicapped, will improve the handicap accessibility. But the details of every little piece, other than the safety pieces I talked to tonight, are really going to come in the way of public process, public input. Go ahead, you can sort of forge ahead here. Here are some of the things that were, we've already had suggestions on, and we talked about. Again, handicap accessibility, additional tables. People love those tables that we have, their checkerboards and chessboards. People use them all the time. New walkways, improved monument areas if desired, new benches and lighting, additional decorative trees, better organization of the grass in the walkway areas, including the pavers, peripial pavers, you know, those little brick pavers, so it looks more like what it probably looked like in the day. And then improve electric power, and we added that, we added the skating rink last year and the year before. You can't always control the weather, but just so many people ended up using it. And even people that didn't use it loved it, just coming to a town, they thought it was, you know, Norman Rockwell. So when Todd Deacon gets out there as our city councilor, representing us in the next hockey game between the mayor's office and the city council, everyone will have free admission. Go ahead. So you can just stroll through this. This is your aerial look. So it's open-ended. I mean, we want to, obviously, some of the trees are getting older, those were planted many, many years ago, and we're going to need to replace them, which, again, the roots are like everywhere. If you walk on the lawn over there, you probably trip it over some of the roots. Again, those are the issues for safety, but we really want to keep it and keep its historic That's what it could look like. Again, these are just things to get people started when we have more in-depth conversations about the common and what we hope to do with the PAC grant. There's your brick pavers, and then it matches up, same elevation, same level as the lawn. Those granite curbs got to come out. We have to take care of that. That's just a liability. It was nice, you know, before it was kind of laid out as a monument kind of area, and you walked up to the monuments.
Mayor, these are alternative ideas that...
Just ideas. And we took those from the input we got from the 35 respondents that we got. The biggest thing is, it really is a gathering space. Leominster Center, if you take a map of 26 to 30 square miles, and look, it literally is in the center. When I was in Pittsfield a couple of weeks ago, it's a big downtown, wonderful things there, but it's not the center. And we don't get, we get like 10 times more traffic than they do in their main road. It literally, you can't get from one side of town, no matter where you're going, without going through town. Yeah, there's backroads, but for the most part, it's the center of the city, it's a gathering spot, it's public transportation, and it's used now more than it's, more than far back as we can find historically, it's used more now than, probably it got more use when the farmers used it, but other than that, it's got more use now than ever. But, so we really have to address, you know, the safety concerns. That's first and foremost.
He used to play croquet on it.
Croquet, yeah.
I got a great picture of it.
Yeah, I've got pictures of that. We got the water fountain, we got the old charlies coming through town, pick people up. Is that it?
That's it.
Okay. So where's the deed part? So do we give everybody a copy of the deed? So we finally called, because we've heard every variation that you can imagine, just like you have. So we asked Shirin from Copman and Page to take a look at it, and do we have it up there at all? Okay. And basically, it's consistent with Reverend Sue said, is the church sold it to the city, to the town at the time. And I'll read, I'll read what Shirin wrote. "The deed is an outright conveyance of the common to the city. The deed places some restrictions on its use. The city cannot construct buildings on the land." As you probably know, there was a building on the land in the past. It was City Hall, it was everything. I don't know, it was a police station, City Hall, it probably was a library, it was high school, it was everything, all in one building. And it says, "It cannot construct buildings on the land or use it for any purpose other than the city common. In my opinion, these restrictions placed on the common in 1841 have terminated by operation of law, and the church has no right to control what happens on the commons." But again, anybody is welcome to come and participate in the process. So we've been told in the past, over time, we've been told, "We don't own it." Then we were told, "We own it," but there's, you know, the church has to, you know, has to approve what we do to the common. So we finally said, "Let's just get somebody to look at the deed, and let's have somebody..."
Can we get a copy of the actual deed?
Yeah, we have it.
Because I, my guess, and I would probably bet on it without even looking at it, that when, when properties conveyed to a community for a park or common, it's typically with a reversionary clause, which means in essence that it becomes the fee interest of the town or city, but subject to going back to the church if any of those reversionary items are triggered.
I don't know. I'm not the city attorney.
Yeah, I get it.
Shirin's pretty...
I get it, but the point is, is no, I mean, those items that were mentioned by Reverend Sue, I mean, there's no plan to do any of those things anyway.
Unless you call the major on Christmas Eve, a building...
That's a different issue.
That's...
Let's not go there tonight.
Nobody's proposing buildings on it.
Okay. Or fences or...
No. It says that we had to take the fence down for the farmers, so they don't want the fence there, specifically for that reason, which is kind of cool, because I might get some goat and go downtown.
They used to have cattle fairs.
Yeah. No, it was very common in the commons. But, so we're appreciative that the church did, you know, deed this over, and we have no plans to put buildings on it, but we really needed to make sure that we were, you know, when we take out these grants, we've got to be able to tell the, you know, the state that these grants, you know, that this land belongs to us and doesn't belong to somebody else. And so we had to clear that up, because it's been kind of unknown for many years, and it's actually why we hadn't applied in the past. But once we actually read the deed and had, you know, somebody read the deed for us, it cleared up any confusion from the past about any kind of approvals that we needed from anywhere other than the public input process that we'll have for the grant itself. So, I mean, a lot of this is probably going to be consumed by taking care of the safety issues that are there. Handicap accessibility, all the wires that we have there, we have speakers in the trees, we do, you know, we're running, you know, holiday lights in the trees, we're, you know, we're doing a power for when they have a small concert there or for the Johnny Appleseed Festival. We're doing all of this, and it's really just temporary, and it has to be, and then pulling the granite curbing out of there as well. All of that has to be done, whether it's city funds or PAC grants. It has, we've reached that point where we've got to, we've got to do it. It's just a liability.
Is there any questions that anybody has for the mayor or Wendy while they are still here before we go back into session? Council Shalfu Zephyr.
Thank you very much. I had a bunch of questions. So, you know, given the nature of the common, that it is historic and is designated that way, you know, in the assessors' database, are there any plans? Let me back up first. So you asked for an appropriation of $588,275, right? So what's that based on? How did you arrive at that number? What's, how did, what plan do you have that got to that number, the request?
So I'm going to hand this out, this is a breakdown of what it pays for.
Go.
But I just want to, I want everybody to understand that we haven't designed this yet, because the grant pays for the design. So this is a, this is just to get us to apply for the grant and to get the grant. So I'm happy to hand this out, but I just don't want anyone to think that we're going to spend exactly this amount on these items, because it could change.
Go ahead. Well, you can continue if you'd like.
Okay. Yep. So that's, you know, so that's one question. So I'm glad that you did say that you want to keep the historical, or the historic integrity, because I think, you know, the downtown common is a place of, you know, certainly gathering, it's a central point in the city of Leominster, but it's also been a place of memorials and commemoration of, you know, all the people that served in the various wars, as well as, you know, the more recent firefighters memorial. So my next question would be, is there any plan or discussion about moving any of those memorials?
No.
Okay. Good. I want to get that on the record.
And I've been there almost 30 years. I've been to more events downtown in the common. I've known all of it, what all the monuments are, I'm well aware. I think as far as history goes and historic integrity, I think I've worked very hard to maintain that. So I don't think there's anybody in town that would ever think that I would jeopardize the historic integrity of the common. I don't think there's anybody that would think so. So we're trying to preserve it and enhance it and have it, and have it so more people can use it. I mean, putting checkerboards with tables downtown, I never thought anybody would be downtown checkers or chess. And I come from town on a Sunday night, and tables are full, and they're having chess matches or checker matches, and go across the street to Subway's or Roasted Peppers and get something to eat and come over there, so. And that's the purpose of the grant, is more and more people using it, which increases our exposure for liability, for something bad. We don't want anybody to get hurt. That's the big thing.
And then why transfer the ownership or management of it to the recreation department?
Because it has to go somewhere, and it's really a park. It's not the DPW, it's not the health department, it's really, it's really a park. And we're trying to get every, you know, this confusion about, is this controlled by Doa Field? People don't want to, it gets very confusing for the average person to understand who controls everything. And so we're trying to get all of our parks in jurisdiction of the park, we're trying to get DPW in its proper jurisdiction, and the grant requires that, I mean, it's a PAC grant. Just like we put in for grants at the schools, and if it's a school grant, they won't give us a grant if it's a school, if the school owns the property, because it has to be accessible for everyone at any time of day. You can't say, "Well, you're going to use this park at the school from 3:00 in the afternoon until 7:00." Yeah, it has to be open to the public all of the time. That's why it's southeast at Francis Drake in the lower section, we had to deed that property from, oh, I'm sorry, on the top section, we had to deed that from the school department to the parks department so we could get the grant.
And then in terms of the...
It doesn't sound good when you put in a grant for the DPW in a park, in a historic park downtown. It's just not the right venue. It's not the right place.
And then in terms of the, what will be the process for public input into the design?
So we had a hearing in June before the grant. We had, a few people showed up. Then we had the public survey process. So we've hired Andrew Leonard, who many of you are familiar with, because he's done a lot of projects in town. So he will start the process probably in a month. We need to have a survey done by Haley Ward. Yeah. So we're having a survey done and to make sure that, you know, the boundaries are exact, and the state will need that to be certified. So then, as soon as we get the survey in a couple of weeks, Andrew will start reaching out to people. We'll probably do a downtown meeting, we can have a meeting here. I mean, really, the sky's the limit on what we can do in terms of public outreach and who can be involved, and everybody can be involved through email. It'll just be an open process of people who want to participate.
Then how will you, how will you, how will you publicize that?
We put it on Facebook, we put it on Instagram, we put it on our cable show, we put everywhere. It's everywhere. It's, we have a database of, how many do you have?
35.
We put, we put it everywhere. The newspaper, we put it on the local, our local radio station, we put it on the Fitchburg radio station. We have a database of close to 4,000. We send it out by email, we text it, we, we send it everywhere, which way you can imagine. I mean, it'll be in the paper, but not everybody reads the paper anymore.
Right.
So we use all of it.
A lot of people are on Facebook, even if it or not.
Right, but we're on Twitter and Instagram, we post it in all the doors here, all the public buildings, public notice, we send it out everywhere, everywhere possible.
We also have, we have our own list of downtown people too, that, you know, targeted to just the downtown people.
Okay. But I'm good for now.
Thank you very much. Just a, Council Oringer.
Yeah. I don't think anyone is going to argue with you about the safety issues down there. Many a time I've took over...
Oh, yeah. Guilty as charged.
So getting it level and, you know, flattened out, I think it'll be a big, big situation. I think it's going to really help. And I think like everybody else, I'm concerned about, you know, maybe destroying the ambiance of, if you want to, of the common. It's, it's got, you know, the trees are nice, but you can overplant, you know, and underplant. So you've got to, you know, keep that in mind when you get to the public hearing aspect of it. But I do have one little question, okay? With all that being said, I see this site furniture down here for tables and chairs and event tables and chairs for about $50,000, small amount of money. But are these going to be portable tables and chairs that you can move in and out of the common as needed?
No. So they need to be, so they're going to be like the ones that are over there now.
So that's just for permanent tables, concrete tables?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. I just wondered. I saw, because I thought maybe I could borrow it.
And we may not spend that much. You know, we may spend, we may not spend that amount, but we had to put an allowance in there for...
Yeah. Just a small question.
Right. And I don't think there's anybody in town that wouldn't say there's ambience and that we're going to come in with some proposal to ruin it. We've got lights down there in the summer. I mean, people, if nothing else, all we do is get complimented on the common, but now we just need to make it safe. Do you know those memorials were built and nobody's ever cleaned them?
I wouldn't doubt it.
That's right. Nobody's ever cleaned them. They need to be cleaned. Those wires need to be put on the ground, they need to put in safely. You know, the walkways, as you said, that's probably going to eat up most of the grant, to be honest with you. I don't know how much will be left after we get through that. I don't know how much will be left after we get through that. There's a lot of trenching that has to be done. You're putting in permanent, you know, utility surfaces. You're trying to bury as much as you possibly can. There's irrigation in there. It's pretty complex. And then you're doing sidewalks, all new handicap entrances. Probably going to eat up most of that. I don't know how much is going to be left. And there's only so much land out there anyway. I don't know how much more you can do out there, you know? It's not like we're going to play, you know, we're going to have sports events or anything else like that. It's really to make it safer for, you know, and more usable for people to use. There are a lot of people that live within a half a mile of downtown and you'll see on a hot day, they'll be down here sitting under the trees, they'll grab something to drink or eat, you know, they're with their kids, they'll let them run around. It's really what the purpose of the common was.
All set, Councilor Inger. Councilor Frida.
Mayor, I can remember when we were working on putting the Vietnam Veteran Memorial downtown and it was pretty controversial and there still wasn't a whole lot of support on putting a monument up yet for Vietnam veterans. And Evelyn Hashi, God bless her, just went completely crazy on us and said, no monuments are going downtown. If it wasn't for like Al Brissad down here as a counselor, you know, who really pushed the issue. We also got an opinion at that point from John Giorgio, who said that the city council had total jurisdiction over what was done, that we should be voting on everything that's done in the park, in the, in the common. I'm not sure if the, if the clerk can find that. I know I probably have it somewhere, but I haven't seen it in a long time. But it's a little different than what Shirin is saying, but-
What he's talking about, I know what you're speaking to, is a change of use. You can't change something, you can't put something there that wasn't there or change the use of something without a council vote. Nothing's changing on this particular project, but if we're going to go to Cottontown Park or somewhere and change the use of it and suddenly go from a park to put in a school or, you know, a, a, you know, community center or something like that, we'd come back to the city council and get a vote.
Correct. Councilor Frida, was that 1990 that they, was that 1990, do you think, Ronin?
Steve Prowler was the mayor.
Probably, yeah.
So, eighty-
Well, it wouldn't be Copeland because he wasn't here, but I know, I know what he's referring to.
I'll look back to see what I can find.
Yeah, pretty sure it was.
I'd say eighty-eight to ninety was when we were raising funds for it. We, we put it up at ninety.
Okay.
But it wouldn't be John Giorgio. He wasn't city solicitor at the time.
It was me.
So, change of use is basically what we've been told by the attorneys.
Okay.
So, we're not changing the use, we're just making this, I'm telling you, most of the, probably the funds are going to be used on safety issues and handicap accessibility.
Okay. Councilor Frida, are you, you all set? Okay. Anybody else have any, Councilor Schaffler-Zephyr?
Yep. The water fountain that's in the, the line, I know it's $50,000, who knows what it'll cost, but that's, that's more of a decorative kind of old fashioned looking fountain. It's not like a water park feature or anything like that.
If you see the picture of what it looked like, you can just Google it. It's, it's pretty, you know, it's, it's pretty, I mean, it's-
Traditional.
Yeah, it's public documents all over the place. That picture, there's postcard.
It was a big postcard.
And there's pictures of it. You'll see it's a really nice looking water. Yeah, it's not a water park. It's a, it's a wa, it's, again, I don't know if we'll have enough money to do it. We'd certainly like to. We talked about it in the past. It would really bring back, you know, the historic integrity of the downtown of the common. It's, it's, it's pretty, it's pretty neat.
Good. Thank you.
Is there any other questions or comments? All set? Thank you, guys. You sure? Councilor Deacon.
Mayor, the deed has been around a long time and I'm just curious, how was the fire department's monument, which is beautiful and I'm all for it? How, why was that or how was that allowed at the time? How long's it been there or when was it established?
Honestly, I think it's been this kind of urban, you know, sort of story about how this was done and I, I don't know.
Yeah.
I, I'm not sure. I, I know the fire department actually talked about maybe moving it to, you know, back down where the fire station is now, but I know there was always like, you know, historic commission would always kind of look and have some input on it saying, hey, you know, we want to keep the historic integrity of it, you know, we don't want to start putting swings and stuff like that in there. And so, I don't know, but I think it's probably dates back before anybody researched the, you know, the deed or I'm not sure. I don't know what was going on then.
Yeah, that was my question because we're building a brand new police station and I truly believe we need to have a police memorial in the city of Lemonster as well.
I think we're getting ready. We're, we're trying to incorporate it into the building and on the two, at the new location on Central Street.
Yeah. Being public safety chair, I would definitely be interested in that and get that moving because I believe they should have their own police memorial there like our sister city Fitchburg does, which I was a part of for a long time and we have a beautiful monument, memorial downtown Fitchburg that really stands out.
I couldn't agree with you more. The, I mean, even when you think about the downtown where the Rotary was, they had to move, that's a story in and of itself when they moved Balls Bluff over to the, to the common from the Rotary. And that in itself was a whole story about, everybody got involved in that. So, no, we're, as I said, I think if you look at construction costs today, most of it is going to be, you know, taking, addressing those safety things because we really want people to use it, but we want it, we want it to be safe.
Thank you.
One claim against us is going to eat up the whole cost of the grant.
Okay.
And we don't want anybody to get hurt. That's the most important.
Councilor Angelina.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd just be remiss if I didn't say that Wendy Weeks has just done an exceptional job as our grant writer. I don't think there's anybody in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts that has a better batting record than you do-
No pressure.
-at this game. So, I just want to recognize that because we, you've, you've certainly generated an awful lot of matching grants that we've taken advantage of and benefited an awful lot of constituents. So, I want to thank you and recognize you for that and keep up the good work.
Yeah, no, we're lucky. So, anyway, it'll be a public, anybody can come. We'll let you know like we always do, people come in kind of, and then later we'll prioritize it, obviously safety issues, but we'll prioritize, you know, with those other, you know, the first thing after we take care of the safety issue should be this and then, but I think you're going to see how fast, you know, the funds get eaten up when you're doing these projects of this scale. And that goes for the treasury. Anybody can come and, you know, kind of weigh in on it.
Okay. Sounds good. Everybody all set? Thank you, guys, very much.
Thank you.
We appreciate it and I think this will make our-
Thank you.
Take a lot of questions that we had and be able to deal with this this meeting. Thank you. So, we do stand back in session. Yeah, yeah. We do stand back in session and we're going to move right into communications from the mayor, beginning with money orders, C-26, Madam Clerk.
C-26, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, request an appropriation of $33,000 be made to the fire equipment expense account, same amount to be transferred from stabilization.
And C-26 is referred to the Chairman of Finance.
Thank you, Mr. President. First time on the calendar, regular course, please.
C-26 has been given regular course. C-27?
C-27, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, request an appropriation of $10,000 be made to the library equipment expense account, the same amount to be transferred from stabilization.
And C-27 is also referred to the Chairman of Finance.
Again, first time on the calendar, regular course, please.
C-27 has been given regular course. Communications, C-28.
C-28, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, request that the annual tax classification hearing be scheduled for December 12, 2022, for the purpose of setting the annual factor used for fiscal year 2023.
And C-28 is also referred to the Chairman of Finance.
Thank you, Mr. President. Regular course and I'd like referrals to the assessor's office, the treasurer's office and the comptroller's office.
Okay. So, C-28 will be given regular course with a referral to the assessor's office, treasurer's office and comptroller's office. C-29?
C-29, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, request the city council vote to accept the special act of legislation with language as attached regarding an act authorizing the city of Lemonster to establish an age limit for original appointment to the position of police officer.
C-29 is referred to the Chairman of Legal Affairs.
Thank you, Mr. President. Regular course. It's my understanding as well, there's no public hearing required for this. So, but I would ask for a referral from the police department.
Okay. All right. And will this, will this affect fire as well? I know that I had some discussion with the police chief about it. I think it's all or none. Do we maybe want to refer to the fire chief as well?
I have no objection.
Okay. So, just to be safe, we'll do that as well. We will refer C-20, give C-20 in regular course and refer it to the police chief and the fire chief. Moving on to appointments, is the Chair of Ways and Means on those?
Wait, don't I read it?
What's, oh, sorry. Sorry, Madam Clerk.
Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, request that the appointment of the following volunteers to the Office of Emergency Management. Zwaniki Visa, 22 Cove Road, Paula Rose, 113rd Avenue, Michelle Shine, 8 Beach Street, Robert Gilman, 14 Broad Meadow Drive, Laura Scott, 16 Mysteria Drive, Carol Scott, 16 Mysteria Drive, Kelly Kendall, 58 Grove Ave., Richard DiMascio, 543 Pleasant Street, Gold Shen Lee, 58 Lorca Street and Marion Derorian, 118 Pine Lane.
Okay. And now, these will be referred to the Chairwoman of Ways and Means.
Mr. President, I'm going to ask that these be given regular course. I also, and, and I'll leave this, I just want to put this out there. It is my intention to not have each of these individuals come down for interviews in this case. I suggested and I asked the clerk to reach out to our Director of Office of Emergency Management and if he could possibly, and for the next day, update us on his vetting process and how he came to, to request these appointments. So, I'm going to ask that it's regular course with that referral just to the, just to Mr. Abthal over at the Office of Emergency Management, just so he can give us a little bit of background rather than have each individual come in for an interview.
Okay. So, these will be given regular course and we will-
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
And we will ask the Director of Emergency Management to give us his rationale on how he vetted all of these candidates and we'll move from there.
I'm going to formally move that we dispense with any interviews for those. And, and I can be heard on why if there's a second. I have a basis for that motion.
Is there a second? Councilor Angelina, I think I saw your hand first. Okay, so we do have a motion on the floor that we officially do not interview these candidates. Is there any discussion on that, Councilor Badanzo? I'll let you explain your review.
Section 3.8 of the Charter entitled Appointments and Removal of City Offices. Section A, Appointments and Confirmations, the mayor shall submit to the city council the names of all persons he desires to appoint to city offices, comma, as department heads, as members of multiple member bodies or otherwise. I, I really don't think that the intention of the Charter was to be interviewing volunteers for a, for emergency management or any other department for that matter. I mean, we routinely hire people in middle management. I know on my tenure as a library trustee, we've hired well over a dozen management, middle management folks that have never been interviewed here. And I, I just think, I'm not saying this is a bad thing, but we real, I don't think we really need to be doing this frankly, and that's my position on the motion to dispense with the interviews in this particular instance.
Okay. Is there any other discussion? Councilor Frida.
Yeah, I'm going to respectfully disagree with Councilor Cross and me. I sat here one time and we had someone who came really highly recommended for a position for auxiliary police through the emergency management. Shortly after that, he was arrested for assault and battery on his wife and his gun was taken away. Sometimes you just get a feeling when you talk to people and they're sitting in front of you. I'm not saying it happens all the time, but I don't think it, it's a big deal if they want to volunteer and they're, they're representing us whether they're volunteering or working for us. So, I don't think it's a bad thing to have them before us. It just, doesn't have to be a two hour interview, can be five minutes just to get a sense of who they, who they are.
Okay. Councilor Deacon, did I also see your hand? Okay. Councilor Schaffler-Zephyr.
Yep, thank you very much. You know, whether or not, you know, legally we should interview these people or not, I mean, you know, the, the case can be made that, you know, that we gain something by having anybody working for the city or volunteering for the city, you know, come down here in public because then the general public gets an opportunity to meet them. All of the police officers and fire department folks used to come down here. We didn't necessarily confirm their appointments, but they were introduced to the council, they were introduced, I think more importantly, to the community at large so that people in Lemonster would know, geez, we've got three new police officers and this is who they are. Oh, we have new firefighters. So, I don't think it hurts. You know, this is a pretty big list of people and maybe Mr. Abthal wants to bring down some of them or all of them. And again, it's an introductory opportunity, I think, for us, me as a person, city counselor and then also just a, you know, resident of the city, to get to know these folks. We'll run into them at some place, you know, we'll run into them downtown at a, an event or, you know, hopefully not, but we could run into, you know, any of these OEM folks, you know, at a, at a problem that we might have in the city. So, again, you know, we don't have to. Is it a good thing to do? I think it is because I think it promotes transparency and I think it also just helps people understand that these are the new people, you know, that are stepping up and volunteering for the city. So, that's, that's my two cents on that. I think it's a good thing when we have people down for an interview, just so that we can all get to know them.
Okay. Thank you very much. Is there any other discussion? I'd also ask, you know, Madam Clerk as well, when you send this referral that we ask, out of all the appointments that we've made over the last couple of years of, you know, to these, for the volunteers, what is the churn rate, if you will? You know, how many, how many are staying and for how long? I know some have, you know, been there forever and others, we appoint them and I never see or hear of them again. So, if we can get some of that information as well, that'd be great. So, I do have a motion and a second on the floor that we do not officially hold any interviews for specifically these 10. Is there any other, everybody all set with discussion? All those in favor of the motion to not hold these interviews signify in usual manner? Those opposed? By a vote of six to two, we will not interview these slate of candidates and all of their names have been given regular course and that referral will go out to the Director of the Emergency Management for information. Moving on to petitions, first time on the calendar, 13-23.
13-23, Officer Julio Ramos, Police Department, request to amend Chapter 13-24 of the revised ordinances entitled Motor Vehicles and Traffic. Chapter 13, Section 13-24, no parking on certain streets is hereby amended by inserting the following text, State Street, both sides, from point beginning 20 feet from the intersection of North Main Street to 1,302 feet from said intersection.
And 13-23 is also referred to the Chairman of Legal Affairs.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. President. Regular course.
Okay. 13-23 has been given regular course. I don't, I don't know if we should officially refer it back to them. Did they give us a pretty good response? Do you want to refer it back to them for an official response or?
Sure.
We can. We can refer it back to them as well, just so they can officially weigh in now that we've accepted the petition in the regular course. Moving on to matters before the city council, beginning with a financial report. Mr. Chairman of Finance, do you have a financial report?
I created one. So, I, I didn't get an updated report for this meeting, but I did take the last report and there's been two additional stabilization fund requests that we regular coursed earlier tonight. coursed earlier tonight. So, um, doing the math, we started the fiscal year on July 1st with a balance of $20,675,366 in the stabilization account. We added interest of $42,269, giving us a balance of $20,717,636. Since July, we have approved or have pending a total of $2,579,424 of appropriations, leaving a balance in the stabilization account of $18,138,212.
Okay, and that is the financial report. Is there any questions or comments? I'll also ask that, um, we do get the financial report, which never came for this meeting, and it'll get sent to everyone and it'll be put on file as well. Moving on to items under finance, C-23, Mr. Chairman, are you ready to report?
I am. Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, requesting an appropriation of $588,270, $5 be made to the POC grant fund, same amount to be transferred from the stabilization fund. While we were in recess, we had a presentation by our grant administrator, Wendy Weeks, and the mayor, um, as well as some input, uh, from the Unitarian Church. And what we've learned is that, um, according to the, um, city solicitor's office, the, um, deed, uh, the property in question, the common, was deeded to the city, um, with a restriction that no permanent building be placed there. We got a pretty good idea of what the intention is from the mayor to make safety improvements and such. Um, I don't think there's any, um, suggestion that there's anything more than, than that that's gonna happen there, and that the nature of the common will be preserved, um, during the planning process, which is yet to be, uh, underway. Uh, the grant is for $400,000, once again, and the city leverages $588,000 with the difference of $188,275. I think it's a project that makes sense. It looks like there are a lot of safety issues there, and it looks like there's gonna be some necessary updates, and, um, uh, I think we should take advantage of it, Mr. President, and I would be in favor of it, and I'd ask you to check with members of my committee.
Okay, Counselor Cormier.
I agree.
And Counselor Angelini.
Well, I'm a big fan of leveraging, uh, these dollars, and I think this is a perfect example of, of that type of leverage, and I will be supporting this as well.
Okay, so you've heard the unanimous recommendation to grant C-23. Is there any discussion? Counselor Shalfu Zephyr.
Yeah, I have a question. So this is coming out of the stabilization fund, right? So we don't have any grant funding in, in-house? We don't, we haven't, we don't have any grant...
We don't have the 400,000. So in essence, what we're doing is we're putting up all of the money with an IOU from the grant from the state to get back the 400,000.
So it, it's somewhat of a risk, because if there's no guarantee we'll get the 400,000?
Well, I think the, I think the grant has been awarded. So, I mean, like, nothing in the world, I guess, is totally guaranteed, but...
I guess, through, through the chair, to the Finance Chair. Counselor Angelini, do you know if the city has applied for the grant and if the city's received the 400,000?
Counselor Bedanza's the Finance Chair.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, the, the, the grants administrator indicated that we've been awarded the grant.
I think July 1.
We have not received the money.
We've, okay. We have, we have been...
It's a reimbursement after we spend the money. We have to put it up, which is typical. We have to put the money up.
Yep, yep.
I have full, full confidence that we'll receive the money back. I have no issue with that.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, all right. Is there any other discussion on C-23?
Counselor Angelina, Arndt, sorry. Yeah, just a, a small question, I, uh, maybe of clarification, more so than anything else. The $40,000 that we get back...
400,000.
400,000, yeah, 400,000 we get back. Now, is that mandated to go back into the stabilization fund, or can it go down a rabbit hole?
It, it'll come back into the general fund.
Good question.
But we're gonna appropriate, as we always do, an amount of money, um, to pay back the stabilization fund of anything we take out of it, at probably some time in June.
Okay.
So it'll go, come back to the general fund, but we'll, we're gonna pay back the stabilization fund, probably after free cash is certified.
Okay.
Thank you. Sorry?
Yeah, he has to send that appropriation down.
Which he always has, historically. He's never not done that. Yeah. Okay. Counselor Frida, did I see your hand as well?
I don't have any doubt that we, we get the money back either, but I do think that it's a major, major move in the downtown, and I think there were a lot of questions that, um, I think we should look. Do we know what's gonna happen with the monuments downtown? Do we know what's gonna happen? We have a World War I, one Lummester man that got killed in the war, I believe. You would know better than me, but I thought...
Twenty-eight, twenty-eight. Twenty-eight Lummester citizens were killed during the war, either in combat or by disease.
Civil war, is it, was there one for the civil war?
No, no.
I thought there was one.
Uh, no, 400.
So...
404, actually.
I mean, is there a plan to move those to Carter Park with the others?
I can't imagine in a million years that that would be...
Well, I don't think we ever, I don't think we ever, um, thought that we'd be moving the Vietnam Veteran Memorial either, and we ended up doing that. Um, I just think there's a lot, a lot of questions. I would like to see, I mean, we get a lot of this information just tonight on what the plan is. I mean, I know it was out there in July, but I think now to be looking at it, I think we need to take our time with this one, and this is an important piece of the city. Um, it involves the churches, it involves, it should have some public input. Um, the deed was obviously wrong in the original, the original, um, submission of the petition. It's, uh, not the Northwest County deeds. I found it in, in the Worcester deed, 'cause it's so old. Um, so it's not in the, I mean, the book and page are the right ones, but it's not Northwest County, it's Worcester.
Yeah, for what it's worth, I read the deed, and I think Sherwin Everett is correct. It's not a reversionary clause, it was conveyed to the city in fade period in 1841, October 21st, to be exact.
Yeah, but it's, it's not in Northwest County.
No, because there wasn't a Northwest County...
Right, exactly, that's what I'm saying. But that's what came down to us, is North, you know, which is for property, I think, up in Ashburnham, um, for the deed that, book and page number that we had come to us. So I, I just think we need to, I'm not necessarily opposed to it, I, I think we need to look at it and, and talk to some of the constituency and find out how they feel about it. I think it's, um, some people would call it a sacred piece of land with the, with the monuments, um, and also go into the, having the recreation department have, be the overseer. Um, I, I'm not so sure that's, that's the way to go either. I, I'd just like to have more of a discussion on it. I don't know that we should be voting to, to do this tonight.
Okay. Counselor Shalfu Zephyr, did I see your hand as well?
Yep, you did. Um, you know, I had a couple of those concerns, and, and one thing that I asked specifically the mayor was about moving monuments, and he said no. So I felt that was important to get on the record, so monuments are not moving. He also said that, you know, that it, it was important to, in, to maintain the historic integrity. I think that's very important. You know, it's not being turned into, you know, a water park or a playground or anything like that. And I, I had a lot of questions, and I wish we had had this information maybe a little bit sooner, but, um, you know, given that, I do agree with, um, you know, that there need to be safety improvements. I've tripped and almost killed myself, you know, on any number of occasions on those curbs. So I think that that's all, um, that's money well spent. I think the electricity, um, would be a big improvement. So, um, I had a lot of reservations before they came down tonight and made the, um, the presentation. So, and getting the mayor on the record, saying that none of the memorials are moving, that the historic integrity is going to be preserved, um, I feel, I feel much better about this. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Counselor Arndt.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, you know, I initially had some, you know, major concerns when I first saw this, because I didn't have the opportunity to go to the public hearings. And as I understand, nothing, you know, according to the mayor, nothing is in concrete right now, other than the safety issues. And I think we're between a, a rock and a hard place. If we don't approve this tonight, we may lose the grant. So I think, you know, we have to go forward, but I will, you know, be honest with you, that I will be attending every public meeting after this, just to make sure that, uh, you know, the, the comment is not, you know, changed in its nature. So, just a comment.
Okay, I agree. Counselor Angelini.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm glad the, at-large Counselor Cross to me reiterated that he did ask that question regarding the monuments, and I think that mayor answered that quite unequivocally, and he also mentioned that these monuments haven't been cleaned since they've been installed. So I think we'll be curating some of these structures and cleaning them up. Secondly, I think the mayor was accurate in his statement that once the sidewalk improvements have been done, there may not be a lot of money left on the table. I mean, construction costs have skyrocketed in the last couple of years. So if we can cure the deficiencies as far as safety is concerned in the common, with the addition of underground electricity that will serve us through the Christmas decorations and other festivals and festivities that occur on the common, I don't, and it's already been public hearings, they've, they've gathered input from members of the community. So I, I don't see any reason to drag our feet on this. I think we ought to give, give, give the mayor and the grant administrator the opportunity to move forward, work with Mr. Leonard, uh, come up with a plan, and we'll get a, we're gonna look at it when they're done. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other discussion on C-23? Seeing none, all those in favor of granting C-23 signify in usual manner. Those opposed? By a vote of seven to one, C-23 has been granted. Does the chairman have an order?
I do. Order that the sum of $588,275 be appropriated to the POC grant fund, same amount to be transferred from the stabilization fund. Move for the adoption of the order.
You've heard the request for the adoption of the order. All those in favor of adopting the order signify by saying yea.
Yea.
Those opposed? By a vote of eight to zero, uh, the order has been adopted. Moving on to C-24. Were you in favor of adopting the order? No.
No.
Oh, okay, so I didn't, I didn't hear, I didn't, I didn't hear a nay, so, okay, so the order is adopted as well by a vote of seven to one. Moving on to C-24.
C-24, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, requests an appropriation of $220,534 be made to the school... Year 23 E-rate revenues. This is a program that the state runs, the grant program. It generates about $202,000 of year of revenues, um, for internet services and equipment to the school department. In this city, the money is generally, well, ends up in the general fund, but historically the city has appropriated it back to the schools. There wasn't any thought to, um, buying equipment this year, because frankly, the process of trying to acquire it, given the shortage of supply, wasn't practical. So in any event, um, it would be my recommendation, Mr. President, to grant C-24 and send the money back to the schools, which, like, again, I've said, we've done historically.
Counselor Cormier.
I agree.
And Counselor Angelini.
I'm in agreement as well.
Okay, you've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Finance Committee to grant C-24. Is there any discussion? Counselor Deacon?
Yes, I'm gonna accuse myself on this matter.
Okay, you're, because of your...
As my wife's superintendent, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, is there any other discussion on C-24? Seeing none, all those in favor of granting C-24 signify in usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of seven to zero, C-24 has been granted. Does the chairman have an order?
Yes, order that the sum of $220,534 be appropriated to the school department expense account, the same amount to be funded by the fiscal year, 23 E-rate revenue. Move for the adoption of the order.
You've heard the request for the adoption of the order. All those in favor of adopting the order signify by saying yea.
Yea.
Those opposed? By a vote of seven to zero, the order has been adopted. If I may, for a moment, I meant to move the appointment to the front of the calendar. Um, the, uh, there is somebody that's sitting here waiting. If there's no objection, um, before we get into the rest of the business, I'm gonna ask that we take the appointment of Michelle Powell to the floor next for a vote, and Madam Chairwoman of Ways and Means, are you ready to report?
I am, Mr. President. Mr. President, it would be my position and my honor to, uh, confirm the appointment of Michelle Powell to the position of Health Director for the City of Lemonster. I would ask you to check with members of my committee.
Counselor Arndt?
I agree.
Counselor Deacon?
I agree.
Okay, you've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Ways and Means Committee to confirm the appointment of Michelle Powell to the position of Health Director for the City of Lemonster. Is any further discussion? Counselor Frida.
I'm gonna support the nomination, but I do, I do feel that she should have been given an opportunity to have, um, the job the same way that the, the men prior to her got the job and had it for as long as they did without having an appointment. So, um, I mean, she's done a great job, and she'll continue to do a great job, so, um...
Okay, all right, thank you very much. Is there any other discussion on the appointment of Michelle Powell? Seeing none, I will do this in a roll call vote, beginning with Counsel Bedanza.
Yea.
Counselor Cormier.
Yea.
Counselor Arndt.
Yea.
Counselor Angelini.
Yea.
Counselor Shalfu Zephyr.
Yea.
Counselor Deacon.
Yea.
Counselor Frida.
Yea.
And I will be recorded as yea by a vote of eight to zero. You are confirmed as the new Health Director for the City of Lemonster. Congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, thank you very much. And I do apologize, I, I got caught up in the agenda and I, I just wasn't, I totally forgot to move you up. Thank you for your patience with us. Okay, we'll get back to items under finance, C-25. Mr. Chairman, are you ready to report?
Yes, C-25, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, requests an appropriation of $42,500 be made to the building maintenance expense account, the same amount to be transferred from the stabilization fund regarding, this is the fund's state mandatory elevator Phase II code interpretation change, compliance is required by 12/31/2022. And this code, uh, update relates to when a elevator goes into the fire, um, emergency mode. Without this update, it is very difficult currently for the fire department to access or open the doors to an elevator, once there's a fire code. Apparently with the update, this will make it much easier for the fire department to open the doors in that event. And as indicated in the, um, communication itself, it's required, you don't have a choice. Uh, and it is a safety update, so it's, it's kind of, uh, you know, makes perfect sense. So, Mr. President, it'd be my position to grant C-25, and I'd ask you to check with members of my committee.
Counselor Cormier.
I agree.
Counselor Angelini.
I'm in agreement as well.
Okay, so you've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Finance Committee to grant C-25. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of granting C-25 signify in usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of eight to zero, C-25 has been granted. Does the chairman have an order?
Yes, order that the sum of $42,500 be appropriated to the building maintenance expense account, the same amount to be transferred from the stabilization fund. Move for the adoption of the order.
You've heard the request for the adoption of the order. All those in favor of adopting the order signify by saying yea.
Yea.
Those opposed? By a vote of eight to zero, the order for C-25 has been adopted. Moving on to items under Legal Affairs, beginning with 9-23. Mr. Chairman, are you ready to report?
I am, Mr. President, thank you. 9-23 is Elizabeth Wood, Planning Director, on behalf of the Planning Board, requests to amend the zoning ordinance pertaining to lot size requirements for a lot division in the residential A zone for lots sized a minimum of 37,780 square feet. This was, um, this is, we have a public hearing scheduled for this on November 28th at 6:50 PM. Therefore, I would be recommending further time this evening, and I would ask you to poll members of my committee.
Counselor Bedanza, any...
I'm in favor.
Counselor Cormier.
I agree.
Okay, you've heard the unanimous recommendation for 9-23 that we must give this further time. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of giving 9-23 further time signify in usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of eight to zero, this has been given further time. 10-23, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. President. 10-23, Elizabeth Wood, Planning Director, on behalf of the Planning Board, requests to amend the zoning ordinance pertaining to lot with requirements for lots in the rural residential zone. Uh, this is much, uh, much the same as the previous, uh, petition. We have a public hearing on this scheduled, uh, as well for the 28th of November at 6:50 PM. So I would request further time, and I would ask you to poll members of my committee.
Counselor Bedanza.
I'm in favor.
Counselor Cormier.
I agree.
You've heard the unanimous recommendation of Legal Affairs to give 10-23 further time. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify in usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of eight to zero, 10-23 has also been given further time. Moving on to 11-23, Mr. Chairman.
11-23, Mr. President. David Cormier, Ward 3 Counselor, and Pauline Cormier, Ward 2 Counselor, requests to amend chapter 13, section 13-29 of the revised ordinances entitled Handicap Parking Spaces, and add the following: Add three handicap parking spaces in the Carter Park parking lot on Main Street, map 24, posel 9, at the southernmost part of the lot. Once again, we have a public hearing scheduled for November 28th at 6:45 PM. I would ask at this time for further time, and I would ask you to poll members of my committee.
Counselor Bedanza.
I'm in favor.
Counselor Cormier.
I agree.
Okay, you've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Legal Affairs Committee to, uh, give 11-23 further time. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify in usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of eight to zero, 11-23 has been given further time. Moving on to items under City Property, 12-23, Mr. Chairman of City Property, are you ready to report?
Thank you, Mr. President. 12-23, Richard M. Marchand, requests to close the Monument Square as well as the following city parking lots and city streets for the 30th Annual Johnny Appleseed Arts and Cultural Festival on Saturday, 20, uh, Saturday...
September.
23, September. 23, September. There's a Saturday, September 23, 2023, between 5:30 a.m. and 7:00 p.m., and for the rain date of Saturday, September 30, 2023, between 5:30 and 7:30 p.m. Number one, from Upper West Street to Lower West Street to the Main Street intersection. Number two, Park Street from the Main Street to the West Street merge. Number three, Main Street from the intersection of Mechanic Street and Lower West Street to Miriam Avenue. Number four, the City Hall parking lot. Number five, the city parking lot adjacent to the City Hall off Upper West Street. Number six, the parking lot between the First Baptist Church and the First Church Unitarian used for people with needs or disabilities. Number seven, the mixed-use upper parking garage is used in the past, all of others which include the religious organizations and downtown merchants shall be notified. This was given regular course on the 24th with a referral to the Police Department, the Fire Department, and the Public Works Department. We received a report back from the Police Department, and it says, "No objections from the Police Department. We look forward to another great festival." Signed, John Farrar, Captain of the Leominster Police Department. We did not receive the Public Works and the Fire Department recommendations, but my position, Mr. President, would be that we grant this without those, because this is the 30th year, and I don't think there'd be any problems from either of those departments. So my recommendation is that we grant 12-23.
Okay. I agree, and also, I'm just going to ask, it looks like the word September was accidentally omitted.
Jealous.
So we might want to have a motion and a second and amend that to add the word September after the word Saturday and then, and before number 23. Counselor Badanza?
I'll move to amend 12-23 by inserting the word September after Saturday in the third line and before the number 23.
Okay.
I'll second.
Seconded by Counselor Angelini, is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the amendment signify in usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of eight to zero, this has been amended, and now I will send the amended version back to the chairman, and I will not ask you to read it all again, but just give me your formal recommendation on the amended version.
The formal recommendation is to accept the 12-23 as amended, and I would ask that you can confer with the members of my committee.
Okay, Counselor Deacon?
I agree.
And Counselor Badanza?
I agree.
Okay, I've heard the unanimous recommendation of the City Property Committee to grant 12-23. Is there any discussion granted as amended? Seeing none, all those in favor of granting 12-23 as amended signify in usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of eight to zero, 12-23 has been granted, and I wish, former Counselor Marchand, much success once again in 2023 with the event. It's something we all look forward to every year. Moving on to items under Ways and Means, with C-22, Madam Chairwoman, are you ready to report? And I do believe that this resolution is going to have to get read in as well, if you can read that in as well. Before a vote or after? Before, okay.
Yes, please.
Well, if you can read the communication first, and then she can read them.
C-22, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, request to accept a resolution to file and accept grants with and from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs for the Parkland acquisitions and renovations for Communities Grant Program for upgrades to Leominster's Downtown Common at the intersection of West and Park Streets in the City of Leominster, and dedication of Monument Square to recreational purposes.
Okay, and then Madam Clerk, if you can read the resolution that goes along with this?
A resolution to file and accept grants with and from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs for the Parkland acquisitions and renovations for Communities Grant Program for upgrades to Leominster Downtown Common at the intersection of West and Park Streets in the City of Leominster, and dedication of Monument Square to recreational purposes, whereas the downtown area of the City of Leominster is a densely populated area with little open space, and whereas improvements to the Downtown Common, known as Monument Square, identified by the assessors as parcel 1-22, and being part of the premises described in a deed recorded with the Western North District Registry of Deeds in Book 362, Page 421, Downtown Common, will expand opportunities to all for the usage of the space, and whereas Leominster's Downtown Common is home to important historic monuments that should be enhanced and protected, and whereas the City of Leominster has more than 30 annual events each year that could benefit from enhancements and upgrades to the Downtown Common, and whereas the main focus of the project is to expand access to open space for new neighborhood families and downtown businesses for general leisure, whereas said Downtown Common is to be protected as recreational land, and the care, custody, and control of the Downtown Common is to be transferred to the Leominster Recreation Commission under Chapter 45, Section 3, and whereas the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs, EOEEA, is offering reimbursable grants to cities and towns to support the preservation and restoration of urban parks through the Parkland acquisitions and renovations for communities, and whereas renovation of the Downtown Common will cost a total of $588,275, and the city has allocated $588,275 through its stabilization account for the purposes of the redevelopment of the Downtown Common. Now therefore be it, one, that the mayor be and is hereby authorized to file and accept grants from the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs, and two, that the mayor be and is hereby authorized to take such other actions as are necessary to carry out the terms, purposes, and conditions of this grant to be administered by the Leominster Recreation Department. Three, the Downtown Common is hereby designated as recreational land under the provisions of Chapter 45, Section 3, and the care, custody, and control of the Downtown Common is hereby transferred to the Leominster Recreation Commission, and that this resolution shall take effect upon passage.
Okay. And Madam Chairwoman of Ways and Means, your recommendation on C-22?
Mr. President, it would be my recommendation that we accept this resolution, and I'd ask you to check with members of my committee.
Counselor Arndinger?
I agree.
Counselor Deacon?
I agree.
Okay, you've heard the unanimous recommendation to grant C-22. Counselor Badanza, I see your hand.
Okay, I think it needs to be amended, as Counselor at Large across from me noted in the prior discussion, there, this is the wrong registry of deeds. The Western North District Registry of Deeds did not come around until 1868. This deed goes back to, I think it was 1841, if I'm not mistaken. So I think we need to, I'm going to move that we amend this resolution by deleting the word "north" in the second whereas clause.
Is there a second on the motion? Counselor Cormier, I think I saw your hand just a millisecond before Counselor Angelini's. So we have a motion and a second to delete the word "north." Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of deleting the word "north" signify in usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of seven to one, the word "north" will be deleted, and I am not going to ask that we reread all of this either, but I'm going to send it back to the Chairwoman of Ways and Means and just officially have a recommendation on the amended version.
Mr. President, it would be my position that we accept the amended language of the resolution, and that we grant this, that we accept this resolution, and I'd ask you to check with the members of my committee.
Counselor Arndinger?
I agree.
Counselor Deacon?
I agree.
Okay, you've heard the unanimous recommendation of Ways and Means to grant C-22 as amended. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of granting C-22 as amended signify in usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of seven to one, C-22 has been granted. Moving on to the other appointment, to the Office of Conservation Commission, Madam Chairwoman of Ways and Means, are you ready to report?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, at last, we discussed this, we had, we were waiting for additional information, and perhaps the clerk can clarify, but the last communication I have is of November 2 of 2022. It is a letter from Mayor Dean Mazzarella asking for, request for leave to withdraw without prejudice in this matter.
That's it? Okay, I thought you didn't get that, sorry. I thought you were ready, okay, sorry.
I did, I, for some reason, I had thought something had come in earlier today, but that's the last one that we have. So based on the mayor's recommend, request, I would ask for a request to leave to withdraw without prejudice.
Okay, and Counselor Arndinger?
I agree.
Counselor Deacon?
I agree.
Okay, you've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Ways and Means Committee to give this appointment of Josh Bowdrige leave to withdraw without prejudice, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of giving this appointment leave to withdraw without prejudice signify in usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of eight to zero, this has been given, indeed, leave to withdraw without prejudice. Moving on to new business, we have two items that are up for first readings of an ordinance. The first one would be formally petition 6-23. Mr. Chairman of Legal Affairs, are you ready to report?
I am, Mr. President. This will be the first reading of an ordinance, petition 6-23, in the year 2022. An ordinance be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Leominster as follows. Amending Chapter 22 of the revised ordinances entitled Zonings. Section 22-4 of the revised ordinance entitled Definitions is hereby amended by adding the following text in alphabetical order. Tow yard, an outdoor storage facility for the temporary storage of towed vehicles, does not include disposal, permanent disassembly, salvage, or accessory storage of inoperable vehicles. Requires yard security fencing, proper lighting and screening from abutting properties. Screening may be in the form of privacy fencing or landscape design. Vehicle storage lot, any city lot or parcel used for the storage of unregistered vehicles, such as a tow yard, vehicle overflow lot, repair facility, or any other purpose, requires yard security fencing, proper lighting and screening from abutting properties. Screening may be in the form of privacy fencing or landscape design. And further, by adding the following text to Section 22-17 in transportation uses. Then we're provided with a chart. Transportation uses, the first one for vehicle storage lot, it, the only zoning in the city be allowed is in commercial with a special permit from the Planning Board and site plan approval, or in the industrial zone with a special permit from the Planning Board and site plan approval. All other districts are not allowed. And tow yard is the exact same thing. Tow yard is allowed in Zone C, commercial, and industrial zone, and it requires a special permit of the Planning Board and site plan approval in either commercial or industrial requires a special permit from the Planning Board and site plan approval as well. Mr. President, I would recommend that we adopt the first reading of this ordinance, and I would ask you to poll members of Legal Affairs.
Okay, Counselor Badanza?
I'm in favor.
And Counselor Cormier?
I agree.
Okay, so you've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Legal Affairs Committee to adopt the first reading of this ordinance, which is formally petition 6-23. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I will do this by roll call vote, beginning with Counselor Badanza.
Yea.
Counselor Cormier?
Yea.
Counselor Arndinger?
Yea.
Counselor Angelini?
Yea.
Counselor Schalfu Zephyr?
Yea.
Counselor Deacon?
Yea.
Counselor Frida?
Yea.
And I will be recorded as yea by a vote of eight to zero. The first reading of this ordinance has indeed been adopted. Moving on to the second first reading of an ordinance that we have on the agenda, which is formally petition 7-23. Mr. Chairman, are you ready to report?
I am indeed, Mr. President. 7-23 is the first reading of an ordinance. In the year 2022, be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Leominster as follows. Article 10 of the revised ordinances entitled Inspector of Weights and Measures is hereby amended by deleting Sections 2 through 39 through 2.4, 2.1 in their entirety, inserting the following sections in their place. Article 10, Inspector of Weights and Measures. Section 2-39, Appointment. On or before the first Monday of February in each year that a vacancy exists, the mayor shall appoint, in accordance with the provisions of Chapter 98, Section 34 of the Massachusetts General Laws, and subject to confirmation by the City Council, an Inspector of Weights and Measures, also known as the Sealer of Weights and Measures, and may appoint one or more deputies to act under the direction of the inspector. The appointed term will continue until resignation, retirement, or removal. Upon the completion of said term, the position is to be filled by mayoral appointment, as stated in Section 2.3 of the Leominster Home Rule Charter, or if appointment is not made at the completion of the term, the position is considered vacant and must be filled by temporary appointment, as defined by Section 2.5 of the Leominster Home Rule Charter. Part-time municipal employees serving as inspectors or sealers of weights and measures and deputies are exempt from the Civil Service Law and Rules and Mass General Law, Chapter 31, unless expressly made subject thereto by statute. Appointees are supervised by the Director of Public Health. Section 2-40, Duties Generally, the Inspector of Weights and Measures and Deputy shall, A, enforce all Massachusetts laws relative to the use of weights and measures, the giving or use of false weights and measures, and accurate consumer pricing. This includes portions or the entirety of the Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 6, Chapter 94, Chapter 98, Chapter 99, and Chapter 101, along with the related Commonwealth of Massachusetts Regulations, CMR. B, provide the owner or authorized agent of device or devices sealed with a certificate stating that the name, stating the name and address of the business, number, and type of devices sealed or inspected, the date when sealed, approved or condemned, and the amount of the fee charged slash collected. C, collect all fees and charges which by Massachusetts law, Chapter 98 and Chapter 40, is allowed to receive, pay to the city treasurer monthly all such sums, and furnish the city comptroller with a duplicate statement of each account. D, have, excuse me, have the custody of all city weights and measures field standards and maintained in operational condition. Ensure that the city field standard test equipment is certified as accurate by the state metrologist in accordance with the required schedule. E, the inspector and all deputies shall be certified by the State Certification Committee within one year of assuming their powers and duties. The inspector and all deputies shall obtain a certificate of qualification in required additional disciplines beyond the basic certification as soon as possible. The inspector and all deputy inspectors shall participate in continuing education programs to maintain professional certification. Section 2-41, Compensation. The Inspector of Weights and Measures and all, and deputies, I'm sorry, the Inspector of Weights and Measures and any deputies shall receive Level S6 salary modified for part-time employment, allowance for transportation if required, and other necessary expenses as the mayor and city council may determine. Section 2-42, Office Hours. The office of the Inspector of Weights and Measures shall be open by appointment only. And then in parentheses, we have R-0, 1960, Chapter 20, Section 6. Section 2-42.1, Fee Schedule.
Counselor Angelini? The city clerk has indicated you don't have to read the whole fee schedule aloud. It's all going to be published in the newspaper. It is on file in the, in her office. It is a public document. Anytime anybody wants to see it, it's readily available.
That's fine. My voice will, will agree with you, Mr. President. So, at this time, my recommendation would certainly be that we adopt the first reading of this ordinance, and I would ask you to check with the other members of Legal Affairs.
Okay, Counselor Badanza?
I'm in accord.
And Counselor Cormier?
Mr. President, I'm going to take this time to thank Counselor Angelini. Mr. President, I'm going to take this time to thank Council Angelini for all his work on all these ordinances, and all the work that he's put in. And yes, I do support it, I agree.
Thank you very much. I echo those sentiments. Is there any, so you've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Legal Affairs Committee to adopt the first reading of this ordinance, which is formally petition 7-23. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of adopting this ordinance, I am going to do this in a roll call vote, beginning with Council Badanta?
Yay.
Council Cormier?
Yay.
Council Arndinger?
Yay.
Council Angelini?
Yay.
Council Shalfo Zephyr?
Yay.
Council Deacon?
Yay.
Council Frida?
Yay.
And I will be recorded as yay by a vote of eight to zero. The first reading of this ordinance, formally petition 7-23, has indeed been adopted. Moving on to, is there any other new business? Council Badanta?
There is. I need to establish a hearing, public hearing on C-28, the tax classification matter, and I'm going to suggest the December 12 meeting at 6:30 p.m.
Okay, all right. So all those in favor of establishing the tax classification hearing for C-28 on December 12 at 6:30 p.m. Is there any discussion? If none, signify in the usual manner. Those opposed by a vote of eight to zero, that hearing has been adopted. Any other new business? Any other old business? Anything under the community calendar? I did get a phone call today from someone who helps out in the city clerk's office as a volunteer with elections, and did ask me to pass along the good work that Madam Clerk did with this past election. He said, you know, it was obviously like most elections, there's a lot to it, early voting now, as well as vote by mail and in person, and sometimes things get a little contentious with people that come in to vote, which happened here, and added oversight, and Madam Clerk handled it very, very well, and we do appreciate all of your efforts during that time. So I told him that I would mention that publicly as well. Is there anything else under the community calendar? Seeing none, all those in favor of adjournment, Council Badanta?
Are you asking for a motion?
For a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
And Council Cormier? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of adjournment signify in usual manner. Those opposed by a vote of eight to zero, we are now adjourned. That was the date.